And we ask that you bear with us. We have some microphone troubleshooting we're working on. So we'll be passing around one or two mics as we discuss tonight. First thing, I am going to make a motion here to do a couple of things. One, move special recognition for Ashlyn Joshi. We're going to move that to a later in the meeting. They asked that we do it after 6:00, so all the parties could be here. So it'll fill in. Once they're here, we'll do that. So we're going to move that. We are going to move new business, Policy 5254 and Policy 7512. We're going to move that up right before reports and discussions. And additionally, we're going to remove the information technology update and move that to September. Patty, if you will call for the roll call vote on that motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we will jump in then to our first item of business tonight. Communication from parents, staff, and district residents. And... There we go. All right, "The Kennewick School District Board of Directors Appreciates Hearing From the Community." At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided, as it's the goal to listen and to learn. Please know that the Board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for those words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of your legal effects, please seek independent legal counsel. Guidelines for addressing the Board. You've already signed in. When the Board President calls your name, please come to the podium. You will have two minutes to address the Board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time is up. Thank you for being here this evening. And our first speaker is Dottie Stevens.
And the microphone, Dottie, I'll give you this one because that one's... Thank you, Dottie Stevens, Kennewick resident. Good to see you. Been gone a little while on vacation, as I'm sure some of you have. So I had a few questions. I looked at things, and it may be answered as I'm here this evening. But I talk to people, and they ask me questions. I said, "I will go and ask. I like to come to board meetings early." My first concerning question is, where are we with the superintendent search? We know we have Tom on board, and I did have the opportunity to meet him. Fabulous, great hire. But where are we with the superintendent search? I know we must have some timeline. I followed that last time, so I know it was a little tricky deal. I see on our agenda, we have something. I see staff expression. I know it's like a WASDA policy we're probably looking at, and it looks like staff control. And I just ask a question, what about staff support? I know as an administrator, former principal, I was very thankful for my qualified staff and our willingness to work together to improve instruction. So I'm thinking locally, not someplace else, Spokane, Lakewood, wherever. I'm thinking working also with students to make sure we are meeting their needs for future career and education, like I have with student rep on the Board. And students who meet regularly to talk about their issues, they're local, they're with us, I want to hear from them. I love hearing from them and hearing what they're thinking. I, as a principal, heard for them with ASB and a student newspaper every day. And we met their needs for career and whatever in each curriculum to help them. I also want to know more about our targeted assistance. I know you're looking at that and how we're doing things, but I know third, sixth, and ninth graders not progressing at a satisfactory level in numeracy and literacy. Academic success not met at those grade levels, third, sixth, and ninth, will result in academic failure. And I did have someone, Janice Link, come talk to you. It wasn't a match for us, I get that. But the program she did was effective, there was no question. But it may not have been able to be adapted for us. And also, I have the continuing question, because we've had some budget issues. Where are we standing today with budget and staffing? Just asking. It's probably on every time, and it's certainly on my mind and on the mind of the people that I represent and report to. Thank you so much.
May or may not fit in, hey? I love this. All right, you guys, I am Linda Stevenson with the Academics Are Cool organization. Dr. Pierce, I am really excited to tell you and everyone that KSD will be hosting a Mathis Cool competition this year for the first time ever. The Middle School Tri-Cities Regional Championships, so grades six through eight, is going to be hosted by Heather Donnis at Desert Hills Middle School. I have a couple of asks. It's been many years since any KSD middle school other than Desert Hills has competed. Some KSD middle schools have never competed. I would love to see other KSD schools represented, because I guarantee you that all of the Richland middle schools will be there. If you guys could send out some, you know, yeah, send out some targeted emails to the middle schools to encourage their participation and to show that the district supports this. The competition itself won't be until January 31st, I think, but planning needs to start at the beginning of the school year, you know, to get an advisor, recruit students, start practices, et cetera. A general posting on KSD socials would be helpful, just so families are notified that this is going to be a thing in KSD. I can help, of course, with any details. I can help by visiting any school and doing an introductory session with a team. I do it all the time. I can go explain what the competition looks like, do a little live practice, especially with the College Bowl apparatus. So feel free to include that offer in any of your communications. You guys all know how to get in touch with me. Thank you.
All right, so moving on, we have the consent items, and I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items. As presented on the agenda.
Great, thank you. Patty, you can call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Ms. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up is communication follow-up. We will, I'm not sure if we have any follow-up. If not, we'll get into superintendent and board member reports.
Great. Again, sorry about the microphone situation. We're just having a little glitch. Did some system improvements, which will be, overall, will improve. We're just working out some kinks here, so thank you for bearing with us. But for my SIPS report, I just wanted to share that it's been a busy few weeks as we gear up for the start of the new school year. The whole KSD leadership team, which includes building administrators and central office administrators convened on August 6th and August 13th for our August Leadership Team meetings. And our theme this year is Mission Possible. And so we really focused our time together on how we need to function as leaders to accomplish our district mission for our students. And sessions, we held various sessions on different aspects of operational leadership and instructional leadership, including policy-focused sessions, sessions focused on our teacher-principal evaluation program, and just a variety of other areas as well. And then between the first and second day of August Leadership Team, we had many of our districts and building administrators and teachers attending the Professional Learning Community Conference in Spokane, and really returning energized around our PLC efforts, which will be continuing this year. And just as a reminder for everyone, our PLC work is really focused on ensuring that instruction and assessment is aligned to grade level and content learning standards, that we have teams in our buildings assessing students and then analyzing that student assessment data to determine individual learning needs, and then implementing appropriate interventions or extensions to address those individual learning needs, with the goal that all students are supported in meeting or exceeding learning standards. So lots of good work happening there, and we're excited about that. I also want to take a moment to publicly thank GISA Credit Union. So each August, they hold an event for districts who participate in the branded debit card program. And they donate funds to participating schools based on the number of debit card swipes. And so this year, they provided us a check for $60,309.65. So it's a significant amount of money that goes to provide funding for career and technical education programs. And not only do they partner with us through this program, they also provide the Student Credit Union work in our high schools, which is a great opportunity for students to learn financial literacy skills. So we're really grateful for their partnership. And then finally, I just wanted to share, you know, we do have new administrators this year, and we have them attend the September Board Meeting to be formally introduced. And then our student rep and representative-elect will begin their official duties in September as well. And so while most of the new administrators will be here in September, we, of course, do have one new administrator who is here, and that's our new Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Thomas Brillhart. And Tom joined our team, our cabinet team, in July, and he's hit the ground running. The operations department includes oversight of the business office, human resources, facilities and maintenance, and transportation. And so Tom's been meeting, there's directors in all of those areas. He's been meeting with the team of directors. He's been meeting with building administrators, really just trying to get a lay of the land and understand needs of our buildings. So welcome, Tom. Tom, do you want to just stand up? That's Tom, everybody. We're glad to have you join the team. And we're also really glad that Vic Roberts, who's here too, our Executive Director of Business Operations, and they kind of coordinate, actually, which is a perfect segue, because it's great that we have Vic here through the end of the calendar year, and they're really working side by side in terms of transition for the business office. So welcome, Tom, and good to see you, Vic.
Great, thank you, Dr. Pierce. We'll start with Mike. Do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I do. You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So I was actually invited by the Association of Washington Student Leaders to a camp they were having outside of Packwood, at the Cispus Learning Center. This was about, oh, three weeks ago, and they have a week-long leadership program, and we had students from both Comicon and South Ridge Town. And I got to tell you, it was a really, really impressive program. And the students we had there were bright, engaging, driven. It was a really, really great program. And I'm hopefully going to catch up with them here after the start of the school year, give them some time to get settled in. But I'd like to hopefully talk to them about how they're going to take the leadership skills that they learned at the camp and how they're going to integrate that into their school year this year. Anyway, it was a great program. There was probably 300 or 400 kids up there from leadership positions all over the state. And anyway, really excited to see how these kids take the information they have and roll it into the school year.
Great, thanks, Mike. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, it's been a busy summer. It's hard to believe that we'll be back to school in two weeks from today. The summer, I've been spending some time, particularly getting to know some of the different partners and some of the different volunteer organizations that work with some of the youth in our community. So had the opportunity to visit the Rotary Club, have been to Boys and Girls Club, meeting with some of their executives, getting to know them, and they're doing some amazing work. Definitely looking forward to finding ways where we can help to work together with these organizations that are already doing some great work in our community, particularly with some of the kids that are at high risk or looking for opportunities to integrate these, a lot of the volunteers. We'll talk about that later in today's Board Meeting, about how we can get the community more invested in our schools and continuing that as part of the goals of the district. And so looking at some of these different organizations, getting to know them and seeing how they work and how they've been reaching out to different groups in the community has been a great experience and really appreciative of all they do.
Thank you. Brittany?
It's great to be back here. I haven't actually been in this room for a board meeting since before school got out in June, so have attended remotely a couple of meetings but haven't been here, so it's good to be back. I don't have, it's been a relatively quiet summer for me as far as school board business is concerned, other than just one or two meetings. But I didn't get a chance to report back in June that I was able to make it to each one of our schools for a school visit. So just wanted to report that I was able to get that done, and I'm looking forward to going back for a second visit this next school year, but also looking forward to having it spread out over nine months rather than just the two I think I fitted in. So I have been spending some time over the last week or two getting ready for the WASDA General Assembly, which is coming up next month. So I just have some front work to do for the Board as far as prepping some spreadsheets and some materials that'll be helpful for us as we discuss those things. So we'll be discussing that in about a month, just getting ready for that vote. So the final version of the handbook comes out on Friday. So I will make sure that you get those links, so you can start reading some of the policies and kind of getting familiar with it, so you can decide how you feel about it.
Thank you, Brittany. Yeah, since school's out, it's, the school visiting doesn't really happen, right? But there's been a lot of just behind-the-scenes stuff, conversations, you know, talking to teachers and things like that, principals, a lot of community stuff, which is actually something I really love to do, spend time with the community and work with kids in the community. I hope everybody's having a great summer, I really do. And I just want everyone to know that, like, you know, I mean, I can't speak for the whole Board, but I think we're all on the same page, so I'll say aye. I just want to make sure that, you know, I just want everybody to know that the goal that I have, and I think we all have, is really to make sure that we have a really, really great school environment, school environments, that every single kid feels loved and accepted, and they can, every kid, regardless of anything, can walk into a classroom and feel accepted, and they can learn, and that parents can feel really comfortable sending their kids to school, knowing that they'll learn math, reading, writing, and go home. And I just, so I just wanted to, like, say that that's a big focus, and I really feel like we're doing great and making strides and steps towards improving every regard of our school, every regard in our school all the time. So I just wanted to throw that out there and thank everybody and wish them a happy summer.
Thank you, Micah. Yeah, so again, it's been pretty low-key. Had some conversations around Title IX and the WIAA and how that process has affected. That's a follow-up to some of the questions I had after our resolution. I did attend the active shooter training again this year. I really, really enjoy that event and getting to see the resource officers and our safety officers take part in that. And I learned something new kind of every time, which is nice. And so this go-around, maybe it's not new, but the fact that our school safety officers have direct communication to KPD, it's not, they have the same walkie. So when the calls come in, they're hearing it just as officers are hearing it too. And so that saves a couple minutes in an emergency situation where the call's not being routed to the school from KPD, and that's great. And then to hear there's a possibility of some new, like, walkies and stuff potentially coming up that KPD's working to secure is another big win. So just really love that partnership with KPD. And so I think that's all that, that's all that I have. Perfect. All right, so we will jump into new business. So this is an item we moved, and we are going to start with Policy 5254, Personnel Staff Expression.
You're with me for just a moment, because now this computer screen doesn't want to work. Okay. Okay, so I am here this evening to present a brand-new policy and recommend it for board adoption. To give a little background about the origin of this policy, in the April 2023 edition of Policy and Legal News, this is the WASDA publication that comes out, the whole issue was devoted to the issue of staff expression and the First Amendment. And so I know board members have seen this publication, and one, there are several policies that WASDA developed from this that are, they're not required essential policies, but they're encouraged or discretionary policies. One was civility in the workplace. And if the Board remembers, it was about this time last year that the Board adopted the civility in the workplace policy. And then the others, another one is staff expression, and that's 5254, the policy and procedure that is coming before you this evening. So what this policy does is it, it, I think it clarifies and spells out really what our current practice is in many ways, but provides a level of clarity for all staff in the district. And obviously, it's a recommended policy from WASDA, so it's been thoroughly legally vetted and encouraged for districts to adopt. And so I won't read the whole thing, but I do think it's important maybe just to highlight the first paragraph, because it highlights the spirit behind the policy, that the Board believes the district has an interest in maintaining an orderly and effective work environment while balancing employees' First Amendment rights to freedom of expression and diverse viewpoints and beliefs. When employees speak within their official capacity, their expression represents the district and may be regulated. Again, that's current practice now, but this helps to clarify a couple of items, and it aligns with other existing policies that are on the books. The beginning paragraph says, "The First Amendment protects a public employee's speech when the employee is speaking as an individual citizen on a matter of public concern. Even so, employee expression that has an adverse impact on the district operations and/or negatively impacts an employee's ability to perform their job for the district may still result in disciplinary action up to and including termination." So I know you've seen the rest of the model policy, the legal references there, and the procedure that goes along with it. We believe it'll just help provide a level of clarity to administrators and to staff, and it nicely aligns with other existing policies on the books. So the recommendation is the Board approves Policy 5254 along with the procedure.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. I will open it for discussion. Anybody have any questions on the policy, concerns? Mike, if you can hear us, it's open. If you've got any questions as well.
Nope, I'm good. It's pretty straightforward.
If there's no discussion or comments, then I will take a motion to, I will take a motion to approve this policy.
Yeah, I move to approve Policy 5254, Staff Expression, for first and second reading as presented.
Patty, if you want to call for the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Pierce is back?
So this policy is, has been amended, and I'm recommending that the Board accept the amendments and adopt the policy as presented. So we currently have policy that is entitled Travel Expense Reimbursement, and there's a procedure that accompanies the policy. And we also have some internal documents that are guidelines around travel. And as we were discussing as a team, updating those and communicating those, we discussed that it makes more sense, instead of having documents that live alongside of the policy, to just incorporate all of it together within the policy. So I want to be clear that this is not in response to any particular issue or anything like that. It's just clarifying the philosophy of, you know, travel and that we're cognizant of the fact that attendance at conferences or any kind of travel, whether it's board travel or staff travel, is taxpayer dollars, and so we want to be really prudent and wise with our use of taxpayer dollars. So with the exception of just some formatting changes, really, the amendment is this, the title, to Travel and Travel Expense Reimbursement. And then the wording here at the beginning that expresses that the Board encourages professional learning and development for employees and board members, and recognizes that access to professional development may require travel. And while there are times that travel is required to participate in meetings, conferences, events, et cetera, and noted earlier, the participation in the PLC conference, for example, the district recognizes it's imperative that taxpayer dollars are used prudently and wisely, and that we, all of us view that travel is a privilege and that we're ensuring that financial resources are used efficiently, effectively, and responsibly. So that is the policy that is recommended for the Board to adopt with these amendments.
Thank you. I will open it up. Any questions, comments for Dr. Pierce on Policy 7515? No comments, no questions, I will take a motion.
I move that the Board approve and adopt Policy 7515. Is it just Financial Management or is it Travel and Travel Expense Reimbursement? For first and second reading.
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Special, we will segue into our special recognition here, and Dr. Pierce.
Great. Well, I'm very pleased this evening to have the opportunity to award a Well, I'm very pleased this evening to have the opportunity to award a Student Leadership Award to a very well-deserving student. Each year, the Washington Association of School Administrators, or WASA, provides the opportunity for districts to select a recipient for a Student Leadership Award. And frankly, this is not an award that we have done historically as a district, but this past year, we had a student who we felt was very deserving of this special recognition and award, and that student is Ashwin Joshi. So come on up, Ashwin. I want to share a little bit about the purpose of this award and what this award does. This award recognizes student leaders who have created or played a significant leadership role in initiatives or programs. And awardees demonstrate leadership and serve as a role model. And the, the award goes on to say through collaboration and community engagement, awardees demonstrate the ability to inspire, motivate, and impact the growth and development of others. They exemplify integrity in all words and actions. They maintain a positive image and presence with the school and greater community. They evoke hope and demonstrate initiative by seeking ways to enrich the future, and they display a strong work ethic inside and outside the classroom. And when I read that, I thought that perfectly describes Ashwin. And so Ashwin, it's in its protective casing, but we want to present you tonight with this leadership award. And if you want to remove it, I'm sure they'll want to get some photos of you. And, but I also want to just provide the opportunity before we take pictures, just to say a couple more things and to provide the opportunity for board members too as well, because I first met Ashwin when he asked to, to meet with me to talk about his financial literacy work and, and the club that he founded. And then he became a participant in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And as board members know, he has been such an advocate for financial literacy and in such, engaged and involved student for us. And it was hard to see him graduate this past spring. We kind of don't want to let him go, but we're really thankful that he was a student in our district and appreciative of all the impact that you made while you were with us and excited to see what's, what you're going to accomplish in the future.
Mike, do you want to say anything?
I do. Sorry, Ashwin, I'm staring at the back of your head, brother. But anyway, Ashwin, so proud of you. Thanks, buddy. So proud of you. So glad I got to spend some time with you. Again, apologize I missed last weekend, so I will apologize profusely. But again, understand you've done great things. You will continue to do great things and you've made our school district better. Not a lot of kids can say that. You have truly made a difference. And I want you to know that, that, you know, Representative Connors will continue to push through with Representative Rude, trying to push through your financial literacy legislation. And I will do everything I can to help that along. So again, thank you so much and I am, again, so proud of you. You've done amazing stuff.
Congratulations. You know, really excited to see where you go from here. I know the last few months, we've talked a lot about the fact that graduation is in the end, it's the beginning and, and that we're really trying to help students move forward. And I'm excited to see, you, you've done a lot of great things. I'm excited to see where you go from here and I hope you continue to have the, that desire to take the initiative, to look for opportunities, to make change. Congratulations, you're doing awesome.
Congratulations. It's been great to observe you up closely. I feel like I missed out on some things because I only got to come in halfway through the school year and see kind of the tail end of what you'd already been working on for so long, but very impressive. And just like Mike expressed, I will do everything I can as a school board member to help push along this initiative to really get financial literacy more into our schools. It's such a valuable and important skill that our students need. So thank you for being that role model and showing us what we're hoping we can produce here in Kennewick Schools and good luck to you in the future.
So, Ashwin, the thing that I appreciate is the engagement. And while, as, you know, students have so many things to think about and to care about and, and so many things pulling them and sometimes it's video games, but, but what you've done and what you've chose to spend your time on is like, is like really, really cool. Something that's going to affect people, affect lives, right? And then so our ultimate goal is to graduate kids who are ready for the world and have the skills necessary and the belief necessary. So, and, and this is one of those skills that's like often overlooked and, and just your engagement to make sure it's not overlooked is really, really cool. And we'll carry the torch for you. We'll get it going. We'll, we'll, we'll make this thing happen. So thank you.
Well, Ashwin, I, I could copy what everybody has already said and I don't want to do that, but I've, I've had the pleasure of getting to meet you through Danica, my daughter, and, and your guys' friendship. And just what an amazing young man you are and you have such a bright future. And when it comes to the financial literacy piece, you've done amazing. You've really left your mark on the district, but I think some of the other things you did at Southridge through your leadership and those things, I think that's going to carry forward as well. And so I'm just extremely proud of you. I know you're going to do great when you head off to, to college here and continue to keep that drive and that passion so you can change the world.
Ashwin, do you want to tell us who's here with you this evening?
I would love to. So I have my mom and dad over there who have been some of my greatest supporters. And then I have my, my aunt and my uncle over here, you know? Truly, these are some of the most special people in my life and, you know, I am beyond grateful, like my, I'm so touched by all of your kind words and truly, this has been, you all are family to me. Like this is my second home here and I really love you all so much and I truly appreciate how much you care about us, the students, and how much you're willing to go to make us all have the best educational experience possible. So thank you. I wouldn't be standing here without each and every single one of your support and I will continue to, you know, follow passion and continue learning and serving others as best as I can. And this award is, means so much to me. So thank you.
Right. So Robin, you're going to Photoshop me in, aren't you?
All right. Moving along, that was great. So we are now going to jump into reports and discussions. I imagine Dr. Pierce is up at it again. We're going to go into Board Processes discussed at the June Study Session.
Okay. So the topic for this discussion is Board Processes. It's really connected to all of our strategic goals. The purpose of bringing this forward, just a reminder, each year, the board completes a self-assessment and discusses the results of that self-assessment at the annual June Board Retreat. At the retreat this past year, board members identified three priorities for board-focused work in the 2425 school year and also addressed some potential strategies for addressing those priorities, but didn't come to any final agreements on those strategies. So I wanted to bring those back in, to the board tonight, what you discussed in June, and then provide you with the opportunity to review those priorities and, and strategies and develop any agreements so they're made prior to going into the 2425 school year. So really the key things for the board to consider is, do you want to move forward with the strategies that were discussed in June? Are there other ideas that you want to consider? And what agreements do you want to implement for the year ahead? So real quickly, I'll just review those priorities, touch on the strategies, and then it will be time for the board to discuss and agree on how you want to move forward. So in June, the self-assessment, just to kind of bring you back, because it's been a little while, remember you get a report back from WASDA on each of those areas and they're all tied to the five standards for WASDA, WASDA's standards for board governance. So the three identified priorities from that rank ordered list that you identified were to publicly recognize the efforts of schools in improving, improving student learning, to follow a defined process for gathering input prior to making critical decisions, and to treat all individuals, including fellow board members, staff, students, and the, and community members with respect. So I'll just quickly go through my notes, what my notes reflected in terms of what you discussed in terms of strategy. So when it comes to the priority of publicly recognizing the efforts of schools and improving student learning, you wanted to make sure that we were highlighting bright spots. So when we're sharing data, if there's a particular school or schools that are seeing some great results, that we're highlighting that as part of the presentation, which gives you the board the opportunity to then, you know, recognize that school. You also discussed, but nothing was decided on maybe doing some sort of meritorious service award. Other boards have done that, where there's some kind of an award given by board members. And then also making sure that as you're visiting schools and doing things, that we're getting that and, and able to put it on district social media so we can highlight, you know, something positive that the board has seen. So I'll go through each of these and then we can go back. The second priority was to follow a defined process for gathering input prior to making critical decisions. And so the idea discussed, based on my notes, was that there'd be some sort of three-touch process for board members when it comes to adding items for discussion or decision, whether that's a policy amendment or a resolution or a new direction or whatever, that, that would start with some sort of written information where the board member who was interested in bringing it forward would provide some background and rationale. Then the next step would be a verbal report or discussion at a board meeting or, in a board meeting presentation. Then there would be some time for individual board members to gather any kind of community input or for community members to come to attend a board meeting to provide input and then the board would make a decision. So it, it would take at least a couple of meetings because there would be, maybe the written information could be sent to me and then I could provide it to the board. That could be considered. Then the topic would be brought up at a, at a board meeting. No decision would be made that evening, so there could be some input gathered and then at the next meeting, the board would come back and make a decision. And then finally, the third priority was to treat all individuals, including fellow board members, staff, students, and community members with respect. And the ideas that you discussed in June were to ensure that everybody's modeling civil discourse, that the board's committed to following the norms and operating principles that the board developed. And those are included on the dais every meeting. They're in a little plastic folder. They're either in your drawer or right in front of you, but those are those board norms, just keeping those at the forefront. And then potentially assessing, taking a minute at the end of the meeting just to assess, how did we do following our norms and to address any, you know, norm violations, I guess at that point. So those are my notes from the June Retreat. And now I'll just go back to the, the first area and, and this is the board's opportunity to say, yes, this is what we want to do, or no, we're missing something, or whatever you decide. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. I will open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions? Oh, go, go ahead.
My, my recollection, oh, I've got my. My recollection was that this, we were, at least my thought process when we talked about this, was that we can take an opportunity to highlight those schools now that we're using STAR, now that we have the STAR test and we have STAR data so readily available. It would be a really good opportunity to start highlighting those schools that are seeing significant change or growth or progress in their STAR data. I just think that that would do a lot for the community to see that, because it's, it's impressive to me every time I go in and it's something that the principals are anxious to share and they want to show the progress they're making in their data from month to month or quarter to quarter. And I think that the community would appreciate knowing that we have strategies in place and we're being proactive about assessing where students are, where, where the growth is needed. So that, that's my recollection that we were talking about highlighting the bright spots, that it was specific to, to STAR data and to growth, but it might have been something different.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember the, a similar, I remember that same as you, Brittany, but I do, I do like the overall push to recognize schools in, in their learning. And I would even like to see maybe as we do presentations going forward with each, maybe presentation, if there's an opportunity to recognize a school for, maybe they're doing well in that particular category or section or something like, I know we developed that, that table at the start. It may be something about recognition in, in the presentation if, if there, I mean, there's probably always someone you can recognize. So I think that would be something I would like to see, so kind of broadening the recognition a little bit. That's it for that one.
Yeah, I'm with, I, I would echo what's been said in that I think actually broadening the circle, I think the STAR is certainly helpful, particularly as we're talking about the lower grades and their progress. But I think part of what we're trying to do here is, is encourage and motivate through incentives and rewards. And so what we're trying to do is, is help those, those schools to look around them and find people that are trying innovative new things, that are working and, and not afraid to, to try new things. And, and hey, if it doesn't work, fine. But when it does work, let's share it and let's see if it works on a bigger scale. And the only way people know to try new things is if, if there's means of communicating that. And this provides a great way of highlighting saying here. Now with that, I think important with the bright spots is more than just saying Highlands is doing really well on this. That, that's nice, but more importantly is explaining what they're doing, what their strategy is that, that has made the change. And that's where I think the, really when we talk about bright spots, it's saying, what are the strategies, what are the changes that they have made that have produced the outcome that, or they believe might be producing the outcome they're looking at? So that this is not just an opportunity to celebrate, hey, you're doing a great job. But even more importantly, it's an opportunity for everyone to learn from what they're doing.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Any?
And I think developing a meritorious, a meritorious service award, I think something that both highlights some of the great teachers in the school district. You know, when we're talking about highlighting bright spots, a lot of times we're talking about schools, or maybe individual grades, or, or things on, occasionally individual teachers. But, but I think looking for opportunities for individuals to be highlighted, that, that they recognize that we are, are aware of their efforts. I think part of it is, is we've talked about student engagement. But I think equally important for student engagement is teacher engagement. And so if, if they recognize that, hey, when I go above and beyond, it makes a difference, and, and they have a public forum to see that. I know there's probably things that each school does, and, and even as a district, they may do behind the scenes. But doing it in a public manner, I think it, it provides them an opportunity, the teachers, to know that we're aware of, of the extra effort they put in, and, and we appreciate that, and the community appreciates it.
One thing you're making me think about is that we have district awards that we give every year, and we recognize and do that at, at our Welcome Back Assembly. So we've got individual staff awards, team awards, trying to remember all of them. But one thing that we don't do is have those people then come and be recognized by the board. And so I can, I'll follow up, and I'll give you the, all of the awards that, that we do as a district every year. And then if that's something that you'd like us to incorporate into having them come and, and attend a, a meeting in the fall, and we can celebrate that, we celebrate them on social media and at the Welcome Back, but not as, as part of our board meetings.
I personally would love that. I, I think it's an opportunity, again, where I feel, I feel like what we represent is, we represent the community here. We're elected by the community, and this is an opportunity for the communities. They're all videoed, so the community can see. Not everybody's on social media, not everybody watches this, but it provides another opportunity for us to really celebrate the great things that are going on in our district, and, and to highlight those, and highlight some of the really special little staff that we have.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. We, do we still do the kudos program where?
We do.
People recognize, the staff recognize each other? I mean, what, what about something as simple as we get a couple of those for each board meeting, and we share with the public, so-and-so was recognized, right? Like, they did a great job with this. I don't, I don't have them all memorized. But I mean, it's something easy that we can do, and we can publicly recognize, facilitate some recognition, for our staff based on other staff members.
Right. So, and just so everyone knows what kudos are, it's just part of our regular, you know, recognition is part of what we build, build into our culture. And so there's an opportunity for staff, it's done weekly, for staff to give a shout out or a kudo to another staff member. And then we collect all of those communications, then communicates those out. So we could certainly highlight a couple of those kudos and, at every board meeting and provide that opportunity. So some of this is maybe connecting, better connecting, some of the recognition efforts that are underway in the district and connecting them with the board. So that's great.
I will pass the mic, but I didn't have any follow-up for the other ones. I think we're fine. Mike, are you?
No, I'm good. Like I say, anything that we can do to help recognize the, you know, exemplary effort and education we're trying to give the kids, I'm good with.
Thanks, Mike.
And that is, is we have the, the sports a lot of times come. But let's make sure that, that we don't overlook. I know math is often talked about, but let's make sure. Athletics is great. Don't misunderstand me. But, but that's not the only thing. And we have some really great other programs that do really well. And I think having them come in and have an opportunity to, to be acknowledged. And I think we should make sure that, that they are not overlooked, that we are not just focused on the sports programs, but on the academic programs as well.
Yes, and we began doing that, and we'll continue to build that into the, into the regular recognition. So that's great.
Anything else?
Are you asking anything? Okay, so we're moving on to the next one.
Next one?
I, I think that this was, I think this was me, at least this was a concern I expressed at that meeting. And I just want to say that I think, Tracy, you've done a good job of taking what I was probably not expressing very well and putting it into a process. So looking over this, preparing for the meeting, I'm comfortable with this. I like this idea. I don't, I realize that it slows things down a little bit, so I'd like to hear some feedback from especially experienced board members on how things are usually brought. But what I was looking for was just more of a process of how things are actually entered into our agenda, because I just have needed a little more of a heads up sometimes, so. But I don't want to make things drag out and take forever either, but.
That's my concern with this, is dragging it out forever. But like, so essentially, for example, I have, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So I've got something I want to bring up. I email you, maybe you and Gabe, and, and then you will take that, digest it, kind of whatever, tidy it up, and then you present that to the, to the whole board, right? Via email or something, right? And then now we have a chance to kind of go one-on-one with you, our point, as you're kind of gathering that together. And then, and then when you think you've got it tidied up, then you're, then you bring it to, for a verbal discussion. Is that correct?
Sort of, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So I think it would be, let's just say you had a policy that wasn't on the books. You said, I would like to have this policy passed, and, and it's coming from a board member. You would email that to Gabe and to me, and depending on what it is, there might, I might need to do a little internal work to say, well, is this like redundant to another policy we have, or whatever? But it would, very soon after, come, like, the whole board would get some information, right? About, here's a policy that Mike is interested in, here's some background information on the purpose and rationale, whatever. So you'd have some time, then maybe individual board members could, so if Brittany had a question about it, and she knew it was coming from you, she could then talk to you and say, you know, help me understand, or whatever, what this is about. And then it would come to a board meeting, and I would present it as a potential policy. And the board would have time during that meeting to discuss it, but the board wouldn't vote on it that evening. The board would then come back the next meeting for the vote, which would provide the time for the community input, whether that's, I'll just use Brittany as an example, Brittany wanting to go back and talk with some of her constituents or her, you know, circle to sit, to ask for their input. And then people would also be aware of it, so they could come to public comment if they wanted to talk about it at the board meeting. So it does add a little bit of a process.
Is there a way to, to, I know what I'm trying to say. At the point where a board member has submitted written information, it has been disseminated to all of us. We've had a chance to review it. At that point, we could each say, this is something I'd like to have some community feedback on. I'd like some additional time before we take a vote on it. Because not everything needs to go through that process. Not everything needs a two-meeting process.
Yeah.
I don't want to be, like, stuck to that. Like, if we're all ready, and we're all, okay, yeah, we're good. I don't think we need to postpone it to another meeting, or, you know, table it. I think we should just be able to move forward right then.
And I agree. I think that there are times when we don't need to go through that second process of going and talking to constituents and getting feedback.
Part of it, I think, is, is we have our board present, or we have our board packets the weekend before. And that's the one area, I would say, you know, usually if I have an issue that I'm concerned about when I'm looking through the board packet, which I try to do if possible at the beginning of the weekend, but definitely have it done by the weekend, so I have a couple of days during the, the week prior to the board meeting. My one concern here is, is sometimes it may delay things. Now certainly, if this is a, something that has a lot of weight, or is, there's a lot of concern, definitely, we want to make sure that, that we've had plenty of time to listen to the community. But I think we want to make sure this isn't, this is perhaps a guideline more than a, a required policy for the reasons we express. For example, the policy we brought up today, the two policies on, on travel expenses, that doesn't need to be a two-board, board meeting discussion. There's not much to discuss there. That's pretty straightforward. And, and I think it will just streamline things. But certainly with, with issues that are more complex, or that are potentially more controversial, I think slowing down the process is not a bad idea.
And I think specifically, so this would be for the, for the items that board members are adding. Because those are the ones that have been maybe kind of more, help me understand. Whereas usually I'm providing some background information well in advance about a, a policy amendment that I'm proposing, or, or staff is proposing, that's needed. And it could certainly apply to that, too, if the board felt. And again, this is all, none of this would be in policy. This is just the board, how the board wants to agree to conduct board business. So it's completely up to you to decide when, when you want to do this, or when you don't.
I mean, I think even if it was another way to address, that would be to say, this is a topic that a board member wants brought up and discussed and decided on, but we're not going to do it at this meeting. We'll do it at the one that's three weeks out. I tried to get to my board packet early in the weekend, too. But even if I get to it Friday evening, Saturday morning, that's still not always enough time for me to go out and talk to members of the community that it concerns, and to get the right kind of information that I need to be able to feel like I can make the decision. And so if I had two and a half weeks over, instead of two days, it might, it would, I would feel more comfortable moving forward with a decision.
Yeah, I would think, for me, this process is, is fine. I would just apply it to like new, like agenda or new topic stuff, right? So I think about graduation requirements, right? It's something that someone wants to talk about. Let's, let's bring that up. Let's have a discussion, get some community input. It's, it comes back the next, the next meeting, right, if we need to make a decision. So, so for me, this, this is more on like, this is a new, this like, hey, I just heard about this. I want to move forward with, with this. Let's, let's put it out there. Let's kind of go through this process. Bring it up, get, get community input, and then make a decision. We know ninety, I think ninety-eight percent of the time, most of the stuff we do, you can read in the packet. It's pretty straightforward. But obviously, we know there's, there's going to be situations where we're going to want to delay it. So I would be comfortable personally, if everybody had kind of the autonomy to say, hey, I think this is going to be a topic we need to discuss and over multiple meetings. And then we just, we make that commitment. But again, it's for mostly new stuff, I think, but.
We're all on the same page, that this community input section does not have to be a second week, but it can be if we kind of want it to. Yeah? Like, if, like, if Brittany says, guys, I really want another week, or, or, you know, another three weeks, then it's like, okay, we'll give it, you know, so. But it's, but it's not like a mandatory thing. We're all okay on that? And then Mike?
Yeah, I'm fine. Hey, the big thing is, we need to be deliberate in our decisions. And so whatever we do, we need to make sure that we take the time to, to get the input from our people and make sure that we're doing our homework. So if that takes, you know, a board meeting or two, that's what we need to do.
I think we're all, I think we're all on the same page. Okay.
Part, part of it, yes. But I, but I also think if it, I think if it's like a new topic, nobody's, we haven't had a discussion on, nothing. It's, it's coming from, you know, something that you've heard, and then, then that would, it'd be similar, or we would use this process, right, where it's going to go over the course of a few meetings. But again, I, yeah, I mean, if you, you need another meeting, then we just push it back. So. Good? Okay, next up? I don't know if anybody, I'm good with this. It seems pretty self-explanatory. I don't know if we need to necessarily take time at the end and rate, rate ourselves, but I think if, I think we all can agree moving forward to be civil and respectful.
Simply a self-assessment at the end, were there any issues that, you know, just saying, hey, were there any issues that this may come up? I think it's, a single sentence will do it, but making sure that, again, we just want to be modeling to everyone how we expect discourse to be.
Any other comments? Any other comments, questions about the strategies? Dr. Pierce, you good to?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Perfect. All right, moving along. Again, we are moving IT's update to September. So we will be talking about artificial intelligence policy and guidelines. Alyssa St. Hilaire is going to give us a class on ChatGPT. Just kidding.
Might have. I was just going to say.
Presentation courtesy of ChatGPT.
Yes. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. Let's see. Tonight, I have a overview. We're working to develop some guidance for artificial intelligence, also AI, throughout our presentation. That's for staff, students. And I wanted to share where we are as a district in this process. At the end of the presentation, I just want to listen to hear if the board has any specific concerns or questions, and make sure to address them in our work this next year. I'm going to spend a little time on some background, some opportunities and challenges that AI brings to education, a little bit of work that we did last year, and then really launching into what we want to do this year and a timeline for that work. So AI's been around for a while before we really thought about it. I put some graphics up here. If you use Instacart, for example, there's AI working in the background. And so it's been around for a little while, but in the last couple of years, it's really just expanded, especially with ChatGPT and OpenAI. It's, it's been a game changer in a lot of industries, including education. And so in the, in the past year, we've been looking for some guidance, and we've wanted to develop guidance. And this is an example that OSPI provided probably around March to school districts of having a human-centered approach to AI in education. Working to develop students' AI literacy, this really aligns well with our work with the KSD learner profile. We need our students to be able to think and process and use these tools correctly. That kind of goes into making sure AI is used ethically, it's equitable and safe for our students. Our teachers need professional development on how this can be an amazing tool, and also how to make sure we're using it ethically, and our students are as well. We also need to just be applying those human-centered principles and aligning it to those best practices. So just quickly, generative AI, it's a way we can enrich education. It, it's not going to replace education. It's a tool. It's not perfect, and it needs to be used responsibly. We need training on it, and we need some guidelines for it in our schools. With that, there are some pretty amazing opportunities with AI. It can really help personalize learning. It can help speed up looking at data and interpreting it, so we can move to action. I've seen some amazing lessons being generated quickly, so there's a lot of different centers. So there's a lot of different centers going on in classrooms. I've seen teachers using it to understand what's the rigor in this standard? Like, what does it mean to really understand this? And it's been really powerful. And it can also help automate a lot of different tasks and speed up some things that have to get done. There's also challenges that come with AI. We need to be aware of academic integrity with our students. Security data privacy is a huge concern. We need to be developing some policies and make sure our companies we're working with, we are keeping our data private. We do not want to overuse AI with our teachers, our staff or our students. And we have to teach and be careful of that bias, misinformation. We also have to make sure all of our students have access to learning how to use it. So we've got some great opportunities, but we're going into this knowing we need to be responsible as well. We, I wanted to just share quickly some of the work we started looking at last year. We really wanted to move quicker on this last year, but things were coming out so fast, we just weren't quite ready. We have been attending trainings. We've looked at some of the OSP guidance and I, we're in a good spot to really create some official guidance this year as a school year. So that I just wanted to share quickly about our AI work team that we want to be working on. By the end of this school year, we want to have guidelines for responsible use. We want to review our policies to make sure that we have the correct policies and guidance for student privacy and also that data collection with the different companies that we're working with. We want to work and align this to the KSD learner profile as well. That's for our teachers and our students to understand why it's so important to use AI responsibly. And we want to put together some resources for families and continue training our teachers. So we're gonna do this over the course of the year. We're gonna convene a district wide guidance team of directors and special that specialists. This will be specialists from IT, teaching and learning, career technical education. And then we want to create an even bigger work team that includes administrators, teachers, students, parents. They will meet probably four to six times throughout the year. We want to share with them where I's going, how it's being used, examples, get feedback, look at policies and guidelines. We also want to reach out to the community. We have a lot of partners in our career and technical education program and community partners. Is this the right use of AI for our students to be learning how to use? So throughout the fall, the winter, we want to be working on that. So before spring break, we can come back with those updates and share them with our stakeholders and get some of our documents updated. So that's kind of our plan. I just want to check in with the board if there's any questions, concerns, or if we're missing anything.
Micah?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Alyssa, for looking into that. So like on this computer, it's like I can, I can go to ChatGPT or some other AI sources. Is that same thing is unblocked for all of our, you know, like Ron, that's not one of the things that Ron has blocked?
I think it depends on the age of our students right now as to what their access is. Right now, thirteen and younger is not supposed to be accessing ChatGPT. But I can follow up a definite answer.
Yeah, and there's also mid journey and there's, there's a ton of different ones. There's Gemini and all, so.
Popeilot, it's in Canada.
So, yeah, because you could, you mentioned several times, access to learning how to use it. So, I mean, the first thing is access. I mean, some kids, you just said, there's a library and they just go do stuff, right? And then other kids are gonna, you know, some kids are gonna experiment with it. Some kids are going to need to, need to sort of have, be taught how to do it. And then so so that's kind of what you're referring to when you say access. So.
Using responsibly, yes.
And then I did, I didn't quite, I wasn't quite clear, like, like, are there, are there moments where we haven't got that set when we're gonna actually, when we are going to be teaching kids about how to? That that part it wasn't quite.
It's gonna come into our digital citizenship, absolutely. We need to be able to recognize when it's been used. It it can be used to harm and we need to be able to recognize, is this real? Is this fake? Yes. So absolutely, we we have to teach that. Our students have to know how to interpret that. Absolutely.
I mean, one of the things in all of the guidance that we've received so far in training is the acknowledgement that it's here. There's, there's, I mean, it's here and it's part of our society and we have to teach kids how and when and obviously apply our filters appropriately and all of that, too. But yes, absolutely, that's part of it. And really being able to say, okay, what is appropriate at what grade level? And what should we be teaching students? And there's certainly danger, but there's also great potential. Couple of things I've heard recently is just as simple as you can ask it to explain something to you like you're five years old or something, right? Like, as a kind of a virtual tutor to break something down and explain it. And so if we we could provide guidance on how to do that most effectively, it could help with explaining things to students who are struggling with a particular concept. And you can interact with it and say, well, explain that part to me differently, you know? And the only other thing I wanted to chime in to say is Alyssa and I talked about, and we've been talking about, and I know that was an interest of the board, too. How do we better engage or more engage our student rep and our rep elect? And so the students we talked about having on that work team, we thought, starting with our student representative and representative elect, and then engaging them with the superintendent student advisory council, which we started to do last year as really our kind of focus group of students who can help give input on things and provide the real, right? Student perspective on how they're already using it and and what what their peers are doing. Because as adults, we don't always know the whole picture if we're not actually asking those questions directly to students. And we have great students who can help us with that.
Dr. Miller?
I think a lot of us see a lot of the similarities and parallels between the early advent and early adoption of the internet, particularly in education. There were a lot of fears that the internet would ruin everything and and it's ruined a lot, but it hasn't ruined everything. No, but it, but I I think we're seeing a lot of the same issues here that we're seeing with AI. And and I think to your point, it's not going away. And I think one of the things that the community, some of the concerns about academic integrity and things along those lines. We need to develop policies that are very clear. Like we said, it can be harmful, just like the internet. The internet isn't all wonderful and not everything on the internet is true. Not everything produced by AI is true. To your, I think on your, in your presentation, that's one of the things is that the companies that produce it, the people that write the code have their own, their own agendas. And so I think in all of this, we need to be very very proactive, but but with the idea that, look, just like twenty years ago, all of us had to learn how to use the internet because it it was going to become an integral part of our lives. Same here. I think we need to really focus on helping kids know how to useful, or how to proactively use these these tools and use them in a productive and positive way. Because if they, we can do that, it will really help them become more more productive and 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 be more prepared.
Great, thank you. How do we go about adding discussions and lessons on AI to our already existing digital literacy curriculum? And is that a standalone curriculum? Is it something we've purchased? Is it something we develop in house?
So we do have state provided technology standards. And some of it in there is how to interpret data and information and use different tools. So I feel like it's already in there. It doesn't call out AI specifically, but it will go in there under digital citizenship. We don't have to buy a program to be, we have to work with our teachers on how to use it.
So, because remind me, Alyssa, and and if I'm going too far off topic and this needs to be a different agenda item, I understand. But our digital citizenship lessons are just kind of dispersed throughout other topics, correct? My 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 recollection is that every school does it a little differently, the timeline's a little different. Sometimes it's coupled with different subjects.
Yes, I would say elementary kind of approaches it through some of the technology rotations. And then in middle school, it's in different CTE classes. In high school, it's in different CE classes. And then I would say that teachers who have a passion for technology will integrate it into what they're studying as well.
So you've mentioned state standards. Do we have district standards or have we had discussions?
It is going to be part of our work this year to better define exactly what you're talking about. So when we come back in February and March, that's some of the guidelines we can share of where things are being taught and how.
Yeah, I would love a clearer picture on that. And I would also like to know just how those things are developed. Because my guess is that, I I just know as a community member myself, I would love to have the district have district specific standards on how we're using technology and particularly the digital citizenship. I just feel like if we're going to take on, if we're going to hand every child in our school district a device, that we need to be proactive about teaching them the proper way to use it. And I just don't, I mean, I know we're making efforts to do that, but yeah, anyway.
I think I've got, yeah, this is helpful and we'll be able to come back with some better, clearer, have some clarity. Yeah. Thank you.
I I just have two quick things. One, do we know of any districts locally or across the state that that are maybe far ahead? Like, they've gotten far ahead of this that we can pick their brains or kind of see what they're doing to kind of help us along the way? I don't know if there's like maybe one district that's like, we've been doing this for two years.
Rob Cone has, is very connected and he, he speaks of Peninsula School District some of the times. And they did put some guidance out early last year. The state is guidance that's coming out. They added more just recently as well about academic integrity, for example, wording to look for in updating policies. And our ESD region is having AI summits. We're gonna send a team to a summit in Spokane in the middle of October. So there are some that did get out there and are having to make some adjustments. And there's a lot of districts right where we are that need to get going on this.
Okay. And then when you talk about feedback from community partners, are you talking about community partners that are like experts in AI local? Or are you just referring to all community partners? Because I would imagine we've got some local partners that are hands down pretty, pretty good with AI that might be able to help us to.
Both, both. I was thinking a little bit of how we got in communication with our universities and some of our CTE advisory boards when we were developing the learner profile and having similar conversations with them. Because you're right, there's already industry using AI all the time that we can be reaching out to.
Okay, nope.
I just wanted to highlight that in the draft objectives for twenty four, twenty five, that you'll see we've got conduct review of educational technology standards for grades K twelve to ensure instruction in digital citizenship and media literacy. And then there's the separate objective, connected objective with the AI work. So it's all going to fit together.
Any other questions, comments before we move on? All right. Thank you, Alyssa. So we will be moving on now to our final report and discussion, Family School Navigator Program. Dr. Pierce?
Okay. So this presentation is on a program called Family School Navigator. And this came about, this is actually maybe a good example of one of the things we talked about earlier about an idea or something coming from a board member. Because during the last WASDA conference, we had some board members attend a session highlighting the Family School Navigator Program in the Port Angeles School District. And so that led to some questions about the program and board member interest in the program. So this presentation provides information on the Family School Navigator Program as well as information about our district's current model for providing family and student support through both in house. That would be district and school based personnel and contracted programs and personnel. And then provides the opportunity for the board to have some discussion and provide some direction for the future. So review some information, provide the opportunity for the board to discuss. I think some of the key considerations for board discussion are advantages and disadvantages of in house and contracted services. If there are aspects of the Family Navic, School Navigator Program that aren't currently being addressed by the district's model. If there's a change in direction, you know, what would the staffing and financial considerations be? And if there's a change in direction, what would be a reasonable timeline for the change? So with that, I think this topic is really focused on on all of our strategic goals. Because the focus is really on how are we best supporting students and providing and connecting with families to provide specific individualized support above and beyond the support that we already provide. So we've got lots of people in our schools providing support to students every day. Obviously, we've got certificated staff and classified staff and administrative staff. And then we've got specialized programs in place and kind of specialized people who provide additional supports based on need. So we, this is really all about family and student support to, and and accessing community resources to provide that support to help students be successful, attend school, be academically successful and ultimately be prepared for their future. So I'm gonna, like I said, highlight the, what I know about the Port Angeles Program and then provide the opportunity for board members to share what they learned. Talk a little bit about our current model and then just some of the pros and cons in general about having in house versus contracted services. So a little bit about family and student support, I just kind of touched on this. But this is about that above and beyond direct and individualized supports to students and families. So students can thrive and succeed academically. It's about building partnerships with families and helping them access resources. Some of that could be basic, physical kind of need resources or mental health need resources. What you might refer to sometimes or read as is wraparound services. And and then how, how do these programs empower families and students to navigate the systems? Whether it's the community systems or the school systems and just help reduce barriers to success. So there's not a lot of information about the Family School Navigator Program on the the dis, the Port Angeles School District's website. But there were some great media articles that that highlight the work that happens there. And just like, for example, it talks about in this paragraph, it might mean inviting them to pick out a new wardrobe at the caring for children clothes closet or arranging for an appointment with healthy families of Callum County. You know, so it's, it's helping families navigate systems to support students and helping them with resources. I did find, this was board provided some information about the job descriptions of the the people who work in the program. So it looks like they have someone who's sort of the coordinator of the program. And they're responsible for a planning, implementation, coordination with teachers. Looks like some grant writing and engaging with community partners. It looks like some grant writing and engaging with community partners, really building that close relationship with students and families in need. And then they have assistants that support the Family School Navigator in coordinating and facilitating all of the activities at the site level, et cetera. So you can see how that's all written up in those job descriptions from Port Angeles. And then the other thing that was shared, and I believe this was shared as part of the WASDA session, were some just testimonials. And I won't read, I just took a couple snips. But this one is from a middle school counselor who listed all the services that the navigators provided, speaks to home visits for students in need, sharing professional development opportunities, collaborating with community programs, McKinney Vento, which is students who are experiencing homelessness, families who are experiencing homelessness, outreach to those students and families, and foster care supports. And then there are a couple other testimonials just about the benefits of the program and how it's helped parents reduce parental stress. So the family can better focus on the success of the student. So here's a testimonial from an elementary school counselor and an attendance secretary as well. Just about the benefit of the program there. So that's the Port Angeles Family Navigator Program. So I've tried to draw a parallel or draw a comparison of what are we doing currently in KSD? And what does our support program look like? So we have a number of district employees who do some of this work and perform some of these functions. So all of the district-based people, meaning that they're housed, they work from the district, but they provide supports out to the whole district. So I won't read all of these to you, but we've got a student and family engagement manager, a student re-engagement coordinator. We have specific staff who are focused on migrant, providing support for immigrant and refugee or migrant students. We've got people who support students in transition and help with foster care coordination. Also new this year, and there should be one here, sorry. We've got our Native American Education Liaison. And then we've got interpreters and translators. And I should note that all of these programs, when I say kind of above and beyond, these are not basic ed funded programs and people primarily. These are title-funded, federal-funded programs and LAP funded positions. And so that money is earmarked toward particular student populations to provide that level of support. At the school level, we've got eight success coordinators who work in various schools. And we've got 10 migrant counselors, call them migrant counselors or graduation specialists. Again, these are migrant-funded positions. So we've got quite a number of people who are district employees who are providing some of these functions, including home visits and things like that, depending on the person. And then we have contracted services here in KSD. So those contracted services are with communities and schools. And we currently have 11 student support coordinators. And that's through a contract with communities and schools. It's, and that's primarily LAP High Poverty funded. So again, not basic ed funded, it doesn't come out of the general fund. But it's about $660,000 for that communities and schools contract for those 11 student support coordinators who work directly in our schools. So this is our current system, blended district employees, both district and school-based, and then contracted services. So just in general, I think, you know, when you look at in-house versus contracted services, there's pros and cons for each. I'll just take Sidexo as an example. So we contract with Sidexo and they're our nutrition services provider. We have a contract with them. So they work here in our district, but they're not district employees. Some of the people who work are district employees, but the overall, you know, program is contracted through Sidexo. So with contracted services, sometimes it's more cost-effective. Sometimes there's subject matter expertise, like with nutrition services. There's a high level of subject matter expertise that we don't necessarily have in-house. So we go to that contracted service for that. And there can also be more flexibility in funding and staffing. For example, when we contracted with Comprehensive Health, as the board recalls, we used ESAR funding to do that. And knowing full well, right, that that was a time-bound program that would expire with the expiration of the ESAR funds. And so that program could go away without us having to do a reduction in force or lay off our employees because it was a contracted service. When it comes to in-house services, you know, some of the advantages are there's maybe more direct control or influence over the day-to-day. They're district employees and there is potentially more opportunities for integration with other existing programs. So essentially, I wanted to, you know, follow up with the board's request to bring the Family Navigator Program information before the board and provide that opportunity for the board to talk about that program and have a discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Sorry, I was waiting for the mic to get on. Any questions, comments? Anyone like to make at this point?
Nobody? I got a couple of questions here, guys.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I guess my concern is, is it seems like we're, at this point, we're trying to replace communities and schools. So when I look at the $660,000 we're spending a year, we've got 11 employees averaging, basically we're paying $60,000 bucks a year on average is what we're getting. Can we replace 11 student support coordinators at KSD rates for $60,000 a head?
No, I mean, we'd have to, if, you know, we'd have to go back and do some costing out of positions. I don't, what I do know is the $60,000 that we pay for each student support coordinator, I don't think that's the salary of the student support coordinator. Because there's backbone oversight and like overhead and things like that. So I don't, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what their, what the hourly rate is for those people who work for communities and schools. So we just need to do some costing out. So I think what I'll do is maybe collect questions that the board has. And it sounds like that would, that's a question.
It is. And I think the bigger issue is, is we look at what we're getting for what we're paying. You know, $60,000 a year for each one of these people is pretty cheap. And I think if we really think we're going to somehow replace 11 people for $60,000 a year on a government salary, I just don't think it's going to happen. So as we are looking at our, everyone's very concerned about the budget, our spend, we need to be very cognizant of the fact that right now we are getting a outside group to do it cheaper than we can do it ourselves. So yes, you guys may have some philosophical issues with this. But at the same time, we're also financially and fiscally, need to be fiscally responsible to our stakeholders. So I think we need to be very careful about how we proceed here. Because again, I think we end up spending a lot more money and getting the same or even less services.
Well, yeah, I agree. We need, I agree with you, Mike, that we need to be careful. I, you know, one of my concerns is on the student coordinators. And we had them come at the beginning of the year. I know they're not, they didn't have any kind of counseling or, they weren't, correct me if I'm wrong. If I recall, they're not credentialed as mental health counselors, any kind of social work. They were, they didn't have any specific credentials, if I remember correctly. And do you guys remember that? Does anyone recall? Were there specific credentials or, I mean, they weren't, they weren't, you know, didn't have masters in social work?
My recollection is that there isn't. But I also, my recollection is that it's not part of the job description that they have credentials for social work or for mental health counseling. However, they are used diversely. As I've gone to the schools and I've asked specifically about how administrators are using communities and schools and how they're using their support coordinators. And it's so varied. It's almost, it's very distinct and different for every school. So I don't know. It would be interesting to find out how many of our student support coordinators are operating in that role. Right, they shouldn't be if they are, if they don't have the credentials to do it. Some schools are, some, at some schools, they are being used for counseling, certainly. I don't know about as far as social work goes, certainly community service-based work.
And that's one of my, I have two, a couple of concerns. One of them is, is the, yeah, the oversight, like, do we know if they're doing this? Do we know if we're doing that? No, we don't. We don't have any idea. So there is very, very little oversight. And then the other one is the quality of the work. I mean, we don't know if it's successful. We don't have any metrics. We don't know if, what, you know, if they're achieving their goals and if those goals are actually tied to helping kids. So I don't even know if it's working, right? And nobody does, really, because we don't know. We asked them to come and they presented something to us and it was, it had no information. So, I mean, in my mind, it's like, we're paying $660,000 for what? For something we don't even know if it's working, if we're like trying to help kids? And I'm not sure we're doing that. I'm not sure. So I feel like now with some oversight and some direction. I mean, when we look at the presentations that Alyssa, the presentation, for example, that Alyssa just did or that any of the KSD staff has done compared to the presentation that we get from them, it's just not, there's not even, it's not even close, right? We have so much more information and data and control and communication. And in every regard, it's just 100%, 1,000% better. So I just think that this is kind of a no-brainer to bring this in-house and to actually have a program that's, that we can actually monitor better and have more success and help kids better.
So I'm going to jump in here, Micah. So Brittany, I'm going to put you on the spot. I know that you've had a lot of conversations with the stakeholders and the administration at the school level. Would you share what their feedback was to you, please?
Yeah, that's actually what I was grabbing the mic to do, so thanks. So I've, like I said, as I've gone around touring the schools, I've been, I've specifically asked principals, you know, tell me how you use communities and schools, how, and like I said, it's varied. But universally, their response is, we couldn't do it without them. And so however they are using communities and schools at their school, they, the administrators value their contribution and feel that they cannot do it without them. And so that was kind of going to be my question to you, Tracy, is that if these student support coordinators were to go away, this funding, because it's federal funding, stays specific to those schools. It's not, the school district doesn't then get $660,000 to our general budget that we can then disperse as we see fit. And my understanding is the way that this money works is that the principals are the ones that decide how they want to use that money in their schools. Is that correct? So if our contract with communities and schools were, you know, if we didn't renew it, those principals still have that, you know, $60,000 or whatever it is, that they can decide how to use it, correct? They've just chosen to use it for communities and schools?
So lots of questions there, let me, no, 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 you're good. So let me just back up and address those. First, I think universally, principals and staff will say, yes, absolutely, that there's value in what they're getting from the person doing this work. The people in the schools doing the work. Anecdotally, just even being at, I'll just highlight Legacy High School. Many of the students, was it at Legacy? Yes, spoke to the specific person who serves as the coordinator. So I don't think, you know, that there's any question about like the kind of service that's provided here. We would not want that to go away. And so if, if, but in terms of the selection, so it's really a partnership. We have a partnership with the district and the school. So the money goes to the school. There's certain, this is LAP High Poverty and it has to go to benefit the school where the need is. And other title dollars are like that, where the title dollars follow the need of the student. So if, for example, the board said, you know, we just don't want to have this anymore, it's not like this $660,000 would go back into a general fund and we would use it for something else. It would, we would need it to use it for a similar type of service. And it's really part of our current model of, so if we just took that out and didn't replace it with something, right? It would, we would have a big hole in what we do. But what we do is, like, we partner, our district learning supports and programs, people partner with the buildings to say, this is the funding coming your way. These are sort of the allowable positions that can be funded through this. And so we, you know, yes, we, we don't want to, it's a partnership. It's like, they don't get to totally decide on their own, just, I could use, I'm just being, you know, like, it's not like a building because I'm going to use the $60,000 for paper or something, right?
Like, for example, I spoke with one administrator that did previously have communities and schools at her school. And she was one that actually didn't find value in it. And so she just didn't win that person's contract was up.
So they did another allowable kind of menu of options.
Another way to use the funding. So I guess I'm just trying to get at what you've said, that the money won't be coming back to the general fund. That money still has to stay at the title schools. And I guess my question is, if we didn't have a contract with communities and schools, would those principals be at, would they be able to hire someone to do the work that they see communities and schools doing? Or how would that work? And I know that there's a question of whether or not they could afford it, et cetera.
I mean, I think what we would have to do is develop our own district program, right? And then, yeah, because there's a need there that's being met, that we want to make sure is met.
Guys, I can't hear anything. So I'm going to chime in here real quick. So as a business owner, one of the things that I'm a huge believer in is if there's something wrong, I first look at myself as a leader and figure out, maybe I wasn't clear. And I sit down with the people that I'm concerned about and we get corrections, corrective actions, and we figure out a way to make it go forward. So if we're concerned that what we're doing with communities and schools is not working and you guys are wanting to change, we need to sit down with them directly and say, okay, here are our concerns, let's address them. And if giving a finite period of time, we decide, hey, this isn't working, that's fine, once we've been giving them, we've given them corrective actions. But to decide that, hey, we're going to throw the baby out of the bathwater here because now we're pissed off and we want to be done with this, to me, that's bad leadership. We need to give them a chance to correct the issues that we believe are present. And if they cannot correct them, then we need to go down the road and do something else. But we don't just decide, hey, no, this doesn't work, sorry, goodbye. We need to stand up, give them a chance to make, to correct course and go forward from there.
I think, first of all, to Mike, maybe to catch you up on the comment that Gabe was making when you couldn't hear. Again, the question here is, isn't, we're not talking about these programs going away. It's saying, actually, to point, Mike made, it's a philosophical question. Do we think that having direct oversight and, because the money will essentially be the same? the same. This isn't actually, the $660,000 is federal Title IX money. We can't, it's there, right?
I think, just to be clear, I believe these are lap, high-poverty-funded positions, which is state lap.
Okay, yeah, so it's, but the point is, is we've got $660,000. We can choose to use it with communities and schools if we think we can do it more efficiently or more effectively, and particularly if we feel, from a philosophical perspective, that direct oversight by the district would provide a better outcome, provide for better coordination, and provide for better integration, then that would be a better option for us to go with. So like Mike talks about in business, businesses often say, look, if a, if a, if a specific thing is outside of their area of expertise, is outside of their core objectives, then often they'll look for outside resources and outsource those, those things. My concern here is, is this is actually part of our core objective. This is, this is part of what we're supposed to be doing well, is watching over these students and particularly looking out for these high-risk students, and we're outsourcing that. That, that provides an opportunity for major problems. I mean, you can see that in industry when you start talking about, actually, we're talking about AI, you start talking about chips. We outsourced that and that created massive issues. So what we need to, I think, when we're looking at this, we should be saying, look, do we need to have better, better coordination and better control to ensure that our outcomes are optimal? And, and to Micah's point, one of my concerns here is, is that, one, the, the, when we had them back here, they initially came, I believe, in November, and then we had them back again a second time, there were questions that were asked that were, were basically not answered. And, and to Mike, I agree, if, if there was an, it, my concern here is, is that when we, to this day, I still can't define specifically, and even everybody, you know, we've all talked, we can't say specifically, what do these student coordinators, what is their assigned role? Each school uses them differently. Or, and, well, if you don't know their role, you can't even determine whether they're effective. And when we had them here, we asked that question specifically, what is their role? What do they do? And saying, well, they do all sorts of things. They're, they're a jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none, might be a phrase you could use here. And that's concerning to me, because, again, if I don't know what their specific role is, and the person that we're having, we've now outsourced to do it can't tell me what their specific role is, that's concerning. That's very concerning as a, because then we're spending a lot of money on something that we don't even know what we're getting. We have no oversight. When we ask for, for specific data, they can't give us oversight. And so that, that provides enormous concern for me. And it, and from a financial perspective, it opens us up to significant liability because we don't know what they're doing. And they could be working outside of their credentials, and we have no idea that that's going on. And that's concerning to me as well.
So I just want to read what this program looks like from the actual WASDA presentation. So the team assesses and supports students and families regarding school transportation, helping students who are homeless, bus, this is the program, this is the Family Navigator program. School transportation for students who are homeless, bus passes, tokens, gas cards, rides to school, educational needs, tutoring, backpacks, clothes, school supplies, food, removing barriers to participation, retention and success, so extracurricular fees, test fees, material fees, alternative education programs, Running Star assistance to that, helps connect to local supports for mental health or substance abuse, helps with the potential of setting up, helping, helping set up medical vision, dental appointments, housing. So they refer them to a family housing center locally. And then just basic needs, clothing, personal items, school supplies, refers families to food banks, those kind of things. So that, essentially, that's what they're saying the program is, which, and that's well-defined.
I mean, this is so much more well-defined. I just feel like it's just a much better program that we can actually monitor and know what's going and know if it's effective. And by the way, the same people can apply and still, still, you know, get that job.
Again, guys, we, if you guys are concerned about what's going on with communities and schools, then we need to sit down with them and hash out what the issues are, what we're trying to do. I mean, for a bunch of conservatives, all of a sudden, we're going to say, hey, the government can do it cheaper than the private sector. Now, I can't think of one instance ever where that's the case. So, I have the floor, so I want to be very clear. If you guys want to do this, that's fine, but understand, there's a cost involved with this. If you're concerned about what's going on with communities and schools, let's sit down with them. Let's have the conversation. Let's, you know, invite them, list out what your issues are. Let's talk about this. Because again, as we listen to what Brittany said about the administrator saying, these guys are vital to their school, and every school is different. You guys want to make this some cookie-cutter program, and each one of the schools has different sets of issues that need to be addressed. Yet somehow you want to say, no, here's a one-size-fits-all for, you know, our 11 programs. That's not how this works. Every school has different issues that need to be addressed. So let's go to them, say, hey, you tell us what you need to do. You tell us what it is you do every day to help these kids be successful. And something tells me it's all of the things you guys are talking about. But you're so hell-bent to kick them out, that we're going to bring it all in-house and make it all okay, and I guarantee you, it's going to cost more dough. So go down this road if you want to, but let's not delude ourselves into thinking that somehow we're going to make this better and cheaper, because we're not.
So the cost piece, I think, you know, we would need to cost out, do a little more, do a little more work to cost out, what would we pay for a similar type of position if that was an in-house position? It's going to be, my understanding, kind of back to the credentials and so forth, if I recall correctly, some of the people who work as coordinators might have a master's in social work, but not all. And so I think there's probably a pay differential for those people, you know, the people work for communities and schools. And, I mean, they have job postings, right, on their site that shows what the, what the hourly rate is. Again, the amount that we're paying is not the amount that's necessarily going directly to the person doing the, the job. And so we would just need to, you know, if it was, if we were hiring social workers, like people with a master's in social work, it would certainly be much, it would be a much higher cost position. But some of, some of the positions they have, it's more of a, like a, maybe equivalent to a para-educator position. And that's probably not too different from the navigator assistant type position. And so, you know, a lot of it, it just, it depends on number of hours, and there's, there's just some factors that I would want to do a little work to actually cost out, work with Vic, work with Tom, and then come back and get that information to the, to the board.
Thank you. I think that would be really helpful.
Okay.
I'm curious to know what sitting down with communities and schools looks like, because we've had them here twice for board meetings, and I'm not sure that's the most effective way to be able to have this kind of conversation. And so is this a situation, obviously, we can't have a quorum, go and meet with them, but is it appropriate, is it effective to have two board members have a meeting with them, sit down, express some of these concerns? I just need some education on what that looks like.
I think that's a great question. So BJ Wilson is the person, and that liaison, who liaisons with Lupe for communities and schools. And, and so, and I have met with Lupe over the years as well. So I think what that would look like, and the boards evolved and changed, and, you know, so I think that what that would look like would, would probably be a meeting with the board president, so with Gabe, and another board member, and me with Lupe, to say, here are some of the things that the board discussed at the board meeting the other night.
I'm just wondering, like, why they didn't, I feel like we've asked them many times, like, bring this stuff, look, you know, and, and they haven't, so I don't know. I just, I literally, I honestly don't think they know the answer. I don't think they know if their program's effective. I don't think they have a way to follow or track it, or, you know, I mean, I just, so I think that, that's my, that's my feeling, because Mike says, like, why don't we tell them our concerns? I feel like we've told them our concerns many times, and nothing. And then we get a, you know, nasty email back. I mean, I don't know, like...
Micah, I think you've said your concerns, but not the concerns of the board. So if we have concerns as a group, let's write them out, let's write them down, let's have the conversation. But again, we need to be deliberate and very clear in what it is we're trying to do. I think the questions that we posed to them were nebulous and somewhat open-ended. Let's make sure that if we want to do this, let's make it clear, write them out, put them on a piece of paper that we can all agree on and go forward. But again, your issues with communities and schools are not my issues with communities and schools. So let's make sure that we're all on the same page and we are all rowing in the same direction.
I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't, I mean, for me, I'm, I would rather move ahead of this navigator program. That's where I'm at.
Okay, well, I disagree. So let's agree to disagree here, because we're, again, this is not, are you going to call for a vote?
This isn't a voting decision, right, discussion? Right, so I guess if I were...
I think what I need is, like, I've heard, I'll just speak and kind of reiterate what Gabe was starting to say. So I've heard individual board members express concerns about particular things. Well, communities and schools is here. I don't think that's been a secret. We know there's been communication recently. There was a letter from communities and schools, right? There's just some, there's been some stuff. What I, what I, I don't necessarily think this is a board vote, but certainly I, I work at the direction of the board. So if the board, you know, unanimously, or even three, says, I'm concerned about XYZ, that's something that I need to act on and follow the board's direction. So I, I need kind of clarity of direction. There's interest in this Family Navigator program. There's been, you know, some questions and concerns. I just need some consensus direction to know how to move forward.
I think, so just to give you my input before I pass it on to someone else, if I could succinctly say at this time what my opinion is of the situation, my highest priority would be protecting the work that the student support coordinators do for administrators, because it's very clear, talking to the administrators, that the work that they are doing is essential to our schools. And so no matter what going forward looks like, whether that's with communities and schools or bringing, bringing, bringing it in-house, I honestly don't think that I have, I don't have a strong opinion about that. I don't have a vendetta against communities and schools, but if I'm being honest, I haven't been overly impressed by the presentations that we've had here. I think that there's been some, it's been, the presentations have been a little lacking on answers. And, but I'm willing to have a conversation with them and say, hey, here are our concerns, in probably a different setting, because I don't think the board meetings were maybe the most effective setting to have that conversation. So I don't have a strong direction for you one way or another, whether it's in-house or whether we keep it contracted, but I, we do need to protect the work that the site coordinators are doing.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, is I would be open to a vote that would basically say, I would like a, to investigate the financial viability and what a in-house, a greater, you know, a greater study of what a in-house program would look like functionally in the Kennewick School District. To Brittany's point, these positions, you know, we want to make sure these kids are taken care of. That's our, that's our fundamental goal. And, and make sure that, that the needs are met in, in the best and most effective way possible. And so I'm open to looking at other options, particularly to Brittany's point. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the presentation right now, again, from, let's see, it was the October presentation where they presented, and again, remembering the specifics of this and, and remembering how frustrated I was when I saw this presentation, because I didn't feel like I, I had answers, and then questions were asked, specific questions, and, and those questions weren't really addressed. And we asked, you know, the board asked her to come back a second time, and even when she came back a second time, I felt it was fairly, it was less productive in answering the questions that were, that were given. I think I would be open to, and maybe I would propose a vote that would say, that would suggest, or giving Superintendent or her cabinet, the, asking her to proceed with a investigational study on the feasibility of in-house, of taking this program in-house.
So when you talk about the feasibility, are we just specifically talking about just the financial cost? I mean, because we're, the program's going to stay, right, in one aspect or the other, right? It may not be 100% what's going on today, but it may be 97%. But what's the cost, I think, is really the big question. So if you're, if you're telling me personally, if I'm looking at it and we cost, we cost a program out, we can keep the same program and, you know, $100,000 cheaper, $50,000 cheaper in the budget that would allow for those schools to use that money in additional spaces, then it seems a win-win for everyone. So that, that's my question. So I think what I'm hearing is, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if this is where you're at too, but let's, let's look forward on the cost and see where it is. And let's have a, while we do that, then two of us can sit down and have a discussion at the same time. And then at the next meeting, it's determined, well, you know, we can discuss whether or not we're moving forward at the in-house program or with, with CIS's program, I guess, or contracted.
Which is fine, but again, we need to make sure, because again, we've got to make sure that we're lined out and, and asking, you know, CIS exactly what our concerns are. We need to line them out. Because again, if we use this nebulous get-out-of-jail-free card, say, oh, well, you're not doing what we want you to do. Well, where's the feedback? Where's the program here that, that makes, makes this deal make some sense? We have to give them the ability to respond to our concerns. If not, this is just a goddamn kangaroo court. Excuse me, I'm sorry, but that just, that doesn't work for me.
So I, I think we're looking at both the finances, but also the, the practicality. I mean, we'd need to look, can we, can we get those positions staffed? We, we need to look both at the financial aspect, but also would we have synergies in the coordination? For example, would this allow the success coordinators to work more closely? Or would there be areas where we could take those positions and use some of the positions we have already and utilize them in a greater fashion? So I think the feasibility study isn't just, it is financial to a large degree, but it's also saying, what are the specific advantages to doing it in-house specifically with this program? And by the same token, what are the disadvantages? Are there, what will we lose specifically by taking this out of our control? And, and, yeah. And, and so we're looking at both. What is, what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages? Right now, we have Port Angeles's program, which is, is a model that seems to work well there. We're asking, would that work well here? Is this a good model for us? And the only way we know is we start looking into it. And that's why I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I would like it to be looked into to see if it's a good model. I think we need to think this through. It's certainly not something we're, we're not voting today, but I think, my vote today would be, let's look at this. Let's actually proceed with studying this. The final thing is, is CIS is a third-party resource. We don't owe them anything. We don't owe them anything. We hire them, and so we are not obligated to do anything. We're not obligated to tell them our concerns. I agree with Mike, it's, it's a nice courtesy, but, but at the end of the day, we have hired them, and, and we've all had services when, for example, if I want to change my internet provider, I don't need to call up Spectrum and ask them if they would like to meet my needs. I can just change my service provider. And, and so if, if they're not meeting our needs, I would, hopefully, they're listening to this program, and hopefully they reach out to us and say, hey, just like I would expect a company that's a third-party resource to say, hey, how can we better meet your needs? We are the client. We are the customer for them, and, and not the other way around.
Okay, so going forward, then, we will, it sounds like we, most everyone or all of us are in agreement, let's look at the feasibility with the cost and the practicality of the program, and then we can set up a, a meeting with them. Two of us can go, if, if two people in particular, I have no problem going, but if there's two board members that absolutely want to go, then we'll just not, make sure we don't have a quorum. And then we'll discuss moving forward at the next, at the next meeting, and timeline, what's the practicality of the timeline, right? I mean, in my opinion, with you leaving at the end of this year, I would prefer a program to be completed, done, and some kinks worked out, before you step away and the new superintendent comes in. So, you know, what, what's the practicality of, of a timeline like that?
The one more thing is, is also, can we do it better? And I feel like I've said that a bunch of times, but that, we're glossing over that. That's, can we do a better job? And to answer Mike's question, I agree with Josh, we don't owe them anything, but we have told them, Mike keeps saying that, like, we have to give them a chance or whatever. I feel like we've done that multiple times, but we don't even have to do that, but we have done that. But can we do it better? Can we do it better? That's, that's the biggest thing that I care about, is can we do a better job?
Just real quick, a point of practicality. When, when you're preparing a presentation for us, I'm curious to know, of all of these district-based and school-based employees that we have already that are doing work, there's some overlap, you know, some of this work takes place at schools where we have student support coordinators, and I'd just be curious to know, you know, at those particular schools, you know, what does the student and family engagement manager do that the student support coordinator is not doing, and, I don't know, I'd like to have a better picture of how those positions work together.
More about what all of these people do.
Yeah.
Well, if you guys are looking for someone to meet with communities and schools, I'll be more than happy to sit down with Gabe and those guys and go through this.
Okay. Now, if we, if there's three people that want to meet, do we just, well, we can, we'd have to post it and have a open discussion. No, I wouldn't recommend doing that, because...
I don't think that's...
There will definitely be people who want to come after us for that.
What, what, what might be helpful is if, if the board can agree, and I can maybe put something in my communication this week and seek the questions or concerns that you have, so we have those all represented from each individual board member, then the two board members and I meet with, with Lupe, and then that kind of report on that meeting could come back to the, and be addressed as part of the September meeting. That make sense?
So you're saying, I just want to make sure I understand the process here. So you're saying, for us to get started on thinking about what our questions are for communities and schools, get them sent to you, you can compile a master list, and then, I've kind of lost you after that. What happens after that?
Then whoever the two board members who are going to be the ones meeting with Lupe and with me would have that list of questions or concerns representing all board members. We would have that meeting, and then we would, as part of the discussion on September 11th, come back and say, this is how that meeting went. This is what was shared, so forth, so on, so the whole board would have that information.
Well, I think a lot of us would be willing to go. I would propose that Brittany be the other, Gabe, obviously, is the president, but I would propose that Brittany go. She's got the best, she's had more exposure to this than most of us, and...
I'm actually going to hope that she's the one that didn't have to go.
Okay.
We've got a course to move forward for the next little bit.
I believe I have a course section.
All right, perfect. All right. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right. We have no unfinished business. We've already conducted our new business. So our next meeting agenda, we will be having a study session on the WASDA legislative priorities and prep for General Assembly. We will then hold a business meeting discussing 2425 key indicators and strategic objectives, K-12 student growth and proficiency targets.
Number three, number three got on there, but that was tonight's agenda item, the board processes.
And then 202425 Get to Know KSD. We will also have the IT annual update, and then we will have a follow-up on the Family Navigator program. Anything else? If there's nothing else, then we will move on to Other Business as Authorized by Law, which will be an executive session for approximately 30 minutes. So we will be back, there will be no more business conducted, and we will be done with the executive session at 8:15. Thank you.